All right, it is two o'clock. I'd like to welcome you to the Tuesday work session for the Glen County Board of Commissioners on this Tuesday, June 18th, 2024. I asked Commissioner Booker if he'd lead us in our invocation. Mr. Tosterson leads in the pledge. He would stand with us?
Bow our heads. Heavenly Father, we thank you for this day. We thank you for our community, Heavenly Father. Thank you, Heavenly Father, for our first responders, Heavenly Father. We ask that you continue to put a hedge of protection around them and their families, around this community, Heavenly Father. We ask that you guide us in this meeting today. We ask all these things in Christ's name. Amen.
Amen. Everyone face the flag, hand on heart.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. This afternoon, we have one item on our agenda, and that is to receive an update in commission discussion on ZM-24-11, 5140 Blithe Island Highway Rezone. We have Miss Lee with us today. We're gonna, gonna hear a presentation by her, and then I think we'll have a few comments and, and some revision to the agenda, so.
Great. Good afternoon, Commissioner Stephanie Lee, Planning Manager. So what I wanted to do today is just go over this application that was submitted to the county. It did go before the Mainland Planning Commission on June 4th, and it is scheduled for your Thursday evening Board of Commissioners meeting for another public hearing. So this item, ZM 2411, is located at 5140 Blithe Island Highway, and they are proposing, it's currently a church building on the property that's been vacated, so the church is no longer operating out of this location, and it currently is Zone Plan Development District. So the application is to amend the Plan Development District to add as uses some different homelessness services and homeless shelter uses. So that was the application that was presented to the county and presented to the MPC. And so this is the location here where the star is located. As you can see, some of the surrounding zoning, so Blithe Island Highway is towards the top of the screen, and then adjacent to the property is highway commercial and light industrial, so also mobile home park next door. Across the street is residential, as well as some highway commercial and, and local commercial zoning, and then behind the property is single-family residential. So it's definitely kind of a mix, mix of uses in this area. And here's just an aerial that zooms out a little bit more, so you can see the intersection of Community Road, Blithe Island Highway, and, and 341, so where this property is located in that vicinity. And so in their request to amend the Plan Development text, and there is a draft called Version One that's included in the packet that went to the MPC, so they did propose to add some different homeless shelter and homelessness services uses, but they did specify that they were not intending for it to be a day shelter. So there would be some services provided, but it would not be a day shelter in the sense of people could come and have meals throughout the day, and so they really wanted to focus a little bit more on some of the, the longer-term programming that they, that they offer, which would be the overnight housing for people that are in more of a transitional nature, you know, posing to, or looking, you know, looking for, for work and also, you know, transitioning to kind of more permanent housing. So here is the property. You can see, this is the access off of Blithe Island Highway and the existing building. And then this is the layout that they are proposing. And then this is the PD text that's currently in your packet, and this was what was proposed to the MPC. And so here is where they kept a lot of the existing uses that are allowed in the PD, so it's basically, it's a kind of a local commercial zoning district is basically what it is currently, and, and so what they were just adding to those uses of the homelessness services. So the Planning Commission held a public hearing on June 4th, and it was a four-to-one vote. Commissioner Higgins was recused, Chair Boatwright and Commissioner Edgy were opposed, but it was a recommendation to the Board of Commissioners to approve with the condition that there would be no day services offered. And, and with that, really the direction from the MPC was for staff to work on some amendments to the Plan Development text to really incorporate the MPC's recommendation so that we would have that available to the BOC. So the Version One, as I mentioned, that's in the packet, is what was submitted to the MPC and considered by them, and then there's a Version Two that's currently in draft form that the county staff is currently working on, and what I wanted to do here was just kind of summarize some of the points that we're looking at with the amendment to the PD text to, to reflect what the MPC's recommendation was. So during the meeting, kind of towards the end of the meeting, as there was discussion with the MPC, the applicant did specify that they'd be willing to take the, kind of walk-in, any kind of day services off the table, so that really the focus would be this longer-term, you know, housing, residential programming, kind of for, for folks that are, are looking to get back on their feet, and that they would eliminate the ability for someone to just, you know, walk in for the day, walk in for a meal, and walk in for some different services. So that's really what staff is really focusing, focusing on for this amendment to the PD text, is kind of more of terminology of transitional housing, that this would be supportive services for people moving into independent living, so it'd be families and individuals. Some of what we would look at there is defining the hours of operation, how long can someone stay at this location, and then also restricting other services that would be available on the site to ensure that the only services there are really affiliated, affiliated with this residential or residency program. And to really clarify, you know, what we're talking about when we say no walk-in or day services, so no temporary or crisis sheltering, really anyone who is gonna be on the property receiving services would be there by an appointment. They would have, you know, notified in advance that they were coming. Someone couldn't just walk up to the front door. So with that, you know, along with no temporary or crisis sheltering, you know, no meals or hygiene services would be available on the site except for the folks that are in that residency program. So that's currently what we're, what we're working on, so just kind of in summary. So available to have with any questions, and we do have representatives of Saved by Grace that are here in the audience, but they're aware that this is not a public hearing and there's no applicant comment, but they are here if you do have any questions with them.
Thank you, Ms. Lee.
Thank you.
On the layout that they've put on the tenor packet, how, how is it that you can have internal lodging with no fiery grass? Has that issue been addressed?
We haven't specified, I mean, the actual plans yet, but I know that, that was their proposed layout, but they have not submitted for, you know, building permit, of course, until the rezon would be approved.
In the event, how do we, how do we address that?
So yeah, that would be, I mean, through the building permit process. I know when we did have an onsite visit with them, you know, staff meeting with them onsite, we did talk about that, ensuring that there was the egress, you know, from all of the sleeping rooms that are, that are in the facility. So they would need to do a level of remodeling to, to ensure that.
Mr. Chairman, would you restate your question? I'm sorry, I didn't hear it, but pay seat, blow it.
Okay, I, I was just asking with the living pods that they, they have in their layout that Stephanie went, went through a while ago, there's a lot of interior uses with no, winded, no fiery grass, and I'm just wondering with the fire department how, how that would meet zoning code, fire protection, life safety issues. And then, in the event that this is approved or some other location is approved in the future, what about right of revision if, or, or revocation if we, if, if there are violations to the proposed use, would we have the right to revoke the, the zoning if, if it's a zoning vote? Do we, do we have provision in our codes and ordinances to revoke a, an approved zoning?
So in terms of compliance with this zoning, I mean, they are required to be in compliance with their PD, and so there could be enforcement, but I'll, I'll turn to the county attorney to do that.
That would be more of an enforcement issue, not a, not a revocation, right?
That, that's correct. Once it's in the zoning, you cannot revoke that zoning. You can, you can change the zoning back, but you'd enforce the application of the actual PD text. Another option would be to make that a conditional use where, you know, that use can be potentially revoked, but answer is no, not, there's no easy way to do that.
So is there a way that we could provide an easier way to do that?
There is.
Now, I would think that would be paramount in whatever, whatever we're doing. Commissioners, I don't mean to hog the time. Is there any questions that y'all might have from this leaf? I know, I know that we're, we're talking about amending our agenda today to, to perhaps defer this, so. Any, any questions, any, anything that we could clear up today?
A few questions, I guess. Could you introduce the operators of Saved by Grace?
Sure, yeah, absolutely. So I know today who we have in the audience.
Just have them maybe come up.
Sure. Yeah, if you'd like to step up. So we have Kevin Higgins, who's the architect for, for the site, and then we have Donna Howard and Maria Gamble from Saved by Grace that are here today.
Hi, I'm Donna Howard.
I'm Maria Gamble.
Ladies, would you share with the commission and the public your experience and background in this style of recovery programs and activity?
Yes, sir. So what's being proposed is the overnight.
Could you speak up?
Sure. Is that better? Yes, sir, thank you. So what's being proposed is the overnight transitional work program for men, and it is an up to six-month program for men that are transitioning from being on the street or in some form of homelessness that are ready to get back on their feet and work. They are required work, they're required recovery meetings, they're required to abide by curfew, they have to pass a background check, just to name a few of the rules.
And what's your background in doing this?
So our previous location was at 186 Cornerstone Drive. We were there from December 1st of 2019 through March 3rd, March 29th of this year, and we have been offering bed space since then. We started off just kind of trying to figure out who needed it most, and after trying to go through the process of families, women, children, those types of things, the need for men was much greater on that side of town, and we had a waiting list for men, and since I would say probably 20, late 2018, 2019, early, we were doing only men. So we had 14 beds for men only. It was an overnight program, and we have, since then, we have one man left in the program, and his exit date is June the 30th. He will be moving into housing.
So you have a lot of experience in this type of program?
Yes, sir.
You're not newbies to?
No, sir. We've, no, sir, we've been a nonprofit since November of 2016. We've only had bed space since December of 2019.
Let me call a timeout real quick, Cap. Quincy, are, are you picking up our voices all right? I feel like I'm talking into a dead mic, and I feel like Cap's talking into a.
Yes.
Does that sound any different to anyone?
That's right.
Is that better, Cap? You wanna test yours, see?
Use my capless voice. So another question is, are there other operators in our community that do what you do?
Too much.
There's actually two mics, one's for the room and one's for broadcasting.
Let's try it again. Okay. So not in the capacity in which we do, no, sir.
Yeah, I, I think I made it worse. Try again.
So the question was, are there any other organizations that do what we do?
Yes.
In the capacity in which we do with the transitional overnight program? No, sir. There are halfway houses, there are re-entry programs, but as far as what we do that I know of, no, sir.
And, of course, I know y'all have been a part of the recovery program in this community for a long time, and neighbors are always concerned about the inhabitants, and it's also a, a thing to, to.
Quincy, if you can move it back to what it was, I think it's better than what we have. Thank you, I, I know you're trying.
The Commissioners, there is an institutional community like this in our community, and that's called Gateway. As Commissioner, in my previous term in 2000, they are there because of the need in our community, which has now exceeded their capacity and ability to deal with these issues in our community. That was a county project. In fact, Bo's dad worked very closely with me to get that project done. Gateway campus is next to a neighborhood, it's next to commercial property, and it was really the ideal location because it provided security for the tenants, but also walk-to-work capacity, things that are very important to recovery. Now, this is getting labeled homeless. I object to that particular definition because that's not the root of the cause. The root of the cause is mental health, rehabilitation, which causes them to be homeless, not all of them, which causes them to be involved in crime, but not all of them. Thought it'd just be an interesting statistic for you here, that in Georgia, there's 900,000 people presently and officially erode in recovery, and 500,000 in active addiction. An addiction is drinking or medicating because they can't bear what's in their head. The Kaiser Foundation is just facts, 49% of all working adults struggle with substance abuse, 90% of Americans have experienced behavior health issues. My wife is a licensed therapist. She lived for a while in homes for care because of devastating things that happened to her and her child, and the indemnity to deal with those things. So I don't like the word homeless. It's a symptom of mental health, and there's no question, and my Commissioners and I have talked to them repeatedly, that we have a desperate need for men's housing, women's too. So I just want to challenge my community because my commission knows I tried to have a second grad at a county-backed facility like this in a local piece of real estate, and, you know, we politely disagree. You know, some people feel that best recovery is put them way out of town, way away from everything, and that really is a proven, unproven, it's a proven model that doesn't work. These people are mainly from our community. They may be brought in from, out of, out of county courts, they may be sent by our own courts, such as Drug Court. So those are some of your tenants. How, how else would you be getting referrals for the clients that would be at your property?
We've gotten some from the Sheriff's Department coming out of jail. We have gotten some from Gateway. Our last tenant that will be moving into housing on the 30th of June, he is from Drug Court. He's doing fantastic. So just various ways. Yes, sir, we do have some clients that come in.
I think that's, I think you're all right.
Okay. We do have some clients that come in from our actual walk-in services that we've agreed not to have at this location, but not all. So there are some that come in through those doors that get those walk-in services that do want help, so we have some of those as well.
So there is a need for an institutional partnership for the persons that you will be overseeing?
Absolutely.
And I see the sheriff back there, and Sheriff, I don't know how many times I've heard you say that you prefer to lock up criminals, not people that need help. They come to your jail because in the moment of their breaking the law or acting out, that's the only place we got for them to come in. But Gateway has been very successful. They're maxed out their capacity, and they're right next to a residential campus and right next to commercial buildings, and there's hardly been any issues at all, except that when you're dealing with people that have emotional problems, sometimes you do have to call in the police or the sheriff to get them called. I'm just stating these facts as you bring this to a public hearing to my fellow Commissioners because they know, really, that my main thought is that institutionally, the county should be doing this with partnership of organizations like you. But my Commissioners didn't feel led to that extent sorrowfully, but we want to find a way that works for you. The site plan issues, some of the things, I know that's an open view property all the way in, but I think, what, what are your thoughts about the entrance and security and just the closing?
Yes, sir. Do you have the picture with the fence? So.
You have that addressed in the application?
We do. There is gonna be a, a fence around the perimeter with.
The neighbors, of course, are concerned. How high would that fence be?
The one that's at the very back, which I believe is the second phase of picket landing, will be eight feet tall, eight foot tall, and then the other sides will be six feet. It will be a privacy fence, with the entrance having a gate that is motorized with the keypad entry with the call box as well.
So that way people are not inclined to look in or harass or bring stuff in?
Yes, sir.
Imagine that, that friends would come to try to help somebody in a clinic right there, just like it happens in the jail sometimes. They wanna sneak in a favor to not, not help. Of course, I'm being a little sarcastic. They wanna sneak drugs in and medicine or other things to people. So y'all have that security planned out?
Yes, sir, absolutely. And don't forget that all the men that will be in the program will be background, background checked as well, and they have to work, so 40 hours a week, verifiable income jobs are required, so they really won't have time to be doing crazy stuff.
And on-site security?
And onsite security, yes.
All right. I think that addresses some of the things I want people to understand about what we have in Glen County, what our needs are, what our history is with Gateway, and the need for continued partnership for communities at risk. That's what they are. They're people, they're at risk, they can be homeless, they can be drug addicted, they can be mentally ill because of things that happen to them, not by choice. Those are people we need help to help, and I appreciate y'all stepping up to try to do the part.
Thank you.
Yeah, in fact, y'all hold on a second, because I, I just wanna thank you all for what you do. I, I, I totally support this program, and mainly because I had a young man from my church that went through this program. So I got a chance to see it from the outside and also hear from testimony from the inside. And I've been involved with trying to work on the issue of the unshelter for a long time, working with Wright Culpepper. We originally thought we would do a village at the end of Norwich Street area, and he had some folk that owned some property back there, and we were gonna have them build in tiny homes for, for themselves and community gardens, and also organize wraparound services. So been working on this for some time, and when I found out about what you all do, which really is a residential work program for men, that's really what it is. And I would add some of the reasons, some of the men that end up in your program, yes, some, I'm sure, may have some addictive disease issues, some mental health issues, but, but some of them are just in love. What, what do I mean? I met a young man who came down here to stay with a young lady, and it didn't work out. He came down here for love, he was working, but he had to leave, got kicked out, and so he needed a place to live. He, I mean, he didn't know anybody, so he was still working, he was in the program. And so those things happen, it's just, you know, decisions that young people make. So it, I don't, I don't know if he had any mental health or any other issues, he didn't seem so. It wasn't reported by the young man that was in my program, in my church, about the program. So it's, it's a lot of that, you know, not, maybe not the best decision-making, especially with the online dating now. People may hop up and, and move from California this way, depending on what the profile and the picture look like. Now, that's not the best decision, but some people do that. And I thank God for you all being able to be there because then they, they may turn to something that's negative if they don't have a place like this. And that's why it's so important, the work that you all do. And let me say something else, too, about you all being young women doing this program. I worked at Job Corps for several years, and the two young ladies that ran that program, I worked on Mail, too. We had 92 men, young men, on that dorm, and sometimes only one person working. And those ladies could work by themselves, they, they trained me, and those young men respected them, they got all their tasks done, very few incidents. Mail, too, was, we always said it was the, the top dorm over there. But, but so, I know, I witnessed how young men and men respond to women who are sincere, but hold them accountable. but hold them accountable. And they really like that. And that's why I think you all's program has been so successful. So, I would encourage you to keep it up. I personally don't think that there's an issue within the kind of the neighborhood worrying about violence or anything. I never got that from reports from the Homeless Coalition members about this program or even people I know that live out there. So, I know that there were some issues. We get issues every day. There are probably issues on C Island that may not hear about them. But people get in arguments, and the police have to be called sometimes. And I wouldn't dare support something that put the other families out there, you know, in danger in any kind of way. So, I'm pretty sure I'll get some emails behind this. But I did get one, very positive one. And I don't know if they talked to you, Donna, or you, who completely changed his mind after talking to you all. And I think that's key, getting everybody's point of view on this, to hear the facts. Because I talked to one person, and they just, from my understanding, I think they just felt like it wasn't right to have women running this program. I totally reject that. And then, I got this email from this guy who at first said he objected to it, but he talked to you all, and he was fine with it. And he lives out there. So, thank you.
Absolutely.
Commissioners, any other comment?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I have one. And I know we're here to talk about the zoning issue and everything. And Maria and Donna, and Maria, we go way back. I appreciate all y'all do. Do y'all currently own that property? Are y'all willing to buy? You don't have any contract or anything right now with that property?
The 5140?
Yeah, on 303.
Yes, sir, we're under contract. We do not own it.
But you don't own it?
Yes, sir. All this is in the contract.
At your old location, who did inspections? Did the state or the county or any inspections of y'all's facility?
No, sir.
None?
No, sir.
Not required?
It's not required.
For a group or a home?
No, sir. We welcome it, but no one did.
Yeah, oh, yeah. That's kind of surprising. I mean, but anyway. So, you don't own the property, and there's no state inspections. And, you know, we've talked about Mainland Praying Commission. I'm not going to dredge all that up, the police calls. But, you know, we've talked, I met with y'all last week, and good talk. And I told y'all my concerns, and they're still my concerns. And, you know, what y'all do is fantastic. But myself and the board here, we got to take into consideration the citizens. And, you know, whether y'all had 54 calls, 43 calls, or 105 calls for service from the police department, we're strapped as a police department here, like most folks. And probably some medical was called. That's concerning to me and to the folks that I'm hearing from. And, you know, I just, and it's kind of concerning that no state inspections are required. You know, we sat down, yeah, we've got a ping pong alley shut down by the state of Georgia, but, you know, we've got a place where y'all doing young men's work, and it's dangerous. It's very dangerous what y'all do. And by virtue of, y'all made phone calls to the non-emergency lumber or 911 to get services. And when you called, you needed service, you know? And whether it was serious or not, it could have been serious. You thought it might be serious. And, you know, I just, you know, at this time, and I know the other board member's going to talk, but this location's not ideal at all. There's a place, where at, I don't know. But it needs to be a way, the only way I'll support anything like this is if it does not impact neighborhoods. And that's the biggest concern I have. Police were called to your old place, and somebody felt the need to call law enforcement or 911. And that's, you know, where I'm at with this. And I know we didn't want to get into all that, but it's just a, I can't get past that. But that's all I have. But thank y'all for what the work y'all do do.
Yes, sir.
It's challenging and dangerous, I will say that.
All right, Commissioners? Anything else?
Mr. Chairman, I move to add an item to today's agenda to defer and remove item number 33-ZM-24-11 from the published agenda of the Board's June 20, 24, 20 of 2024 meeting.
Second.
All right, have a motion by Commissioner Rofuski and a second by Commissioner Swett to amend today's agenda to add that item to be deferred. Any discussion?
Guess I'll say one more thing. For me, having these men in a structured environment versus underneath the overpass or in some of these camps, to me, makes us safer, makes these same neighborhoods safer. Because when they're under the overpass in these camps, it doesn't stop them from coming to any neighborhood they want to come, unless they're breaking the law. I mean, it's still America. They can walk into any neighborhood unless it is gated and has security that they want to. But what I've observed is, given the opportunity, they're just like the rest of us. They have a second chance or a first chance. Just made some bad decisions or whatever. But this program does help that. So, that's my two cents about security.
Mr. Chairman, can you repeat what the motion was? I wasn't quite, or we?
I move to add an item to today's agenda to defer and remove item number 33-ZM-24-11 from the published agenda of the Board's June 20, 2024 meeting.
So, we're adding an item today to vote on to remove this item from Thursday's agenda.
Okay, so the vote is to remove?
The vote right now is to add that item to today's agenda.
What we're doing today, Cap?
Yeah, just to allow us to make a motion to defer the item.
So, for the right of our meeting, this will not be heard?
That that's going to be the next motion. All right?
Okay.
Got to vote on this one first.
All right. So, I have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Those in favor of adding that to today's agenda, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous.
Mr. Chairman, I move to defer and remove item 33-ZM-24-11 from the published agenda of the Board's June 20, 24 meeting.
Second.
Have a motion by Commissioner Rofuski, a second by Commissioner Swett.
A question. Was that deferral?
The motion and the second is to defer and remove that item from Thursday's agenda. It's item number 33 on Thursday's agenda.
So, it just takes off that agenda, or are we deferring it to another day?
No, it will, it will, in effect, defer that item until later down the road. But it will take it off of Thursday's agenda. Any other discussion?
Can you get a second?
I had a motion by Commissioner Rofuski, a second by Commissioner Swett. All in favor, please raise your right hand. All right, those opposed. That's 641 against. All right. Any other items come forth, Commissioner, today? No need for executive session today. Motion to adjourn.
Chairman, a motion to adjourn?
Second.
Had a motion by Commissioner Rofuski, a second by Commissioner Clark to adjourn. All in favor, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous. We stand adjourned. Thank you.